Good evening, everyone. Welcome to council meeting of April 2nd, 2024. If anyone in the audience needs amplifying headphones, please raise your hand and we'll bring those to you. If not, um, let's rise for pledge, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Now, I can do a roll call, please.
I will. Councilmember Blush?
Here.
Councilmember Sherman?
Here.
Councilmember Gutierrez?
Here.
Mary Nesko?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Schmidt is absent. Councilmember Sterns?
Here.
And Councilmember Gilmore?
Here.
Motion to the Deputy Mayor?
Deputy Mayor Schmidt.
Yes. Sorry. Right. Motion in second, Deputy Mayor Schmidt. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Does council have any late changes to the agenda? City manager, any late changes?
No.
Mr. Mayor?
There any board reports to share?
Yes, I have a board report from the environment, from behavioral health services. They are looking into basic sanitation policies when there are RVs parked on a lot. They are looking into street vending, changing the rules to have temporary street vending. And also, they're looking at what kind of bleeds and an abatement fund to help people clean up their property when there's code enforcement problems.
Is this county?
County. County Board of Health.
All right. Any other board reports to share? All right. Has everyone reviewed the item consent agenda? Do you have a motion?
Need to approve the consent agenda as published.
All right. We have a motion in a second to approve consent agenda as published. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right. We have two proclamations tonight. I will read the first one, which is Child Abuse Prevention Proclamation. All right. Whereas the city of Shelton recognizes our future rests on the hands of most vulnerable and cherished assets, our children. And whereas, all children deserve to live in a safe, stable, and nutrient environment to promote their healthy growth and development. And whereas, child abuse neglect and other trauma are recognized as serious public health affecting both the current and future quality of life in our community. And whereas, it is the responsibility of our community to ensure parents, caregivers, and other adults who influence the health and well-being of children have the support, knowledge, and concrete resources necessary to ensure all children thrive to their greatest potential. And whereas, effective child abuse prevention strategies succeed because of partnerships among agencies, schools, religious organizations, law enforcement agencies, healthcare providers, and business community. And whereas, we as Shelton residents continue our commitment to protecting all members of the community and call upon all citizens to join together to increase public safety preventing future abuse or neglect of our children. Now, therefore, the city of Shelton council does hereby proclaim April 24th is Child Abuse Prevention Month, and the city of Shelton urges all citizens, communities, state agencies, faith groups, medical facilities, elected leaders, medical providers, educators, and businesses to increase the participation in the efforts to support families thereby preventing child abuse and strengthening the community of which we live. And I will sign this tonight after this meeting. Is there anybody here for this proclamation that would like to speak? Of course. Okay. Please state your name and your county resident.
I know the drill. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Patty McGuire. I'm here today on behalf of the Family Education and Support Services. I want to begin by thanking you for this proclamation on behalf of FESS and the 20,000 individuals we serve annually in Mason, Lewis, and Thurston counties. I thank you for the declaration of April as Child Abuse Prevention Month and for prioritizing health and the health and well-being of children. Families do better when communities rally around during tough times. And we've seen tough times in the last few years and the impact that those tough times have had on families. And FESS serves families because we have the support of the residents of the three counties that we serve and partnerships with like-minded communities. And I thank you, Sheldon City Council, for this partnership.
If I may join Patty. I'm Roger Jones. I'm actually the Community Engagement Director for FESS. And we would like to present to the council and anyone else that would like a pinwheel of hope. Pinwheels are the national symbol for Child Abuse Prevention Month, so we would encourage you to put this on your desk or put it in your yard or wherever to encourage people to think about what they can do to prevent child abuse in our community here. And also, we joined Dee Wolverton is our local staff person out on John's Road that works with the community out here directly as well as our staff. So if I may approach the table there and those that would like a pinwheel real quickly.
Would anybody know what FESS stands for?
Family Education and Support Services.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. He's not here.
You can leave a few here. How's your hat on that? You're not staff. Thank you. Appreciate it. Yeah, well, this.
Thank you. All right. Our next proclamation is going to celebrate telecommunications and this will be read by Councilmember Gilmore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services. And whereas, when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of law enforcement officers, firefighters, and emergency medical personnel is critical to the protection of life and the preservation of property. And whereas, the safety of our law enforcement officers, firefighters, and emergency medical personnel is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from residents who telephone the Macecom Emergency Communications Center. And whereas, public safety telecommunicators are the first and most critical contact our residents have with emergency services. And whereas, public safety telecommunicators are the single vital link for our law enforcement officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas, public safety telecommunicators of Macecom have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. And whereas, each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year, especially under difficult circumstances. Therefore, be it resolved that the city of Sheldon, Washington declares the week of April 14th through 2024 to be National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in the city of Sheldon in honor of the dispatchers who diligence and professionalism keeps our community and residents safe. To be signed by the mayor this day, the 2nd of April.
Thank you, councilmember. Does anybody in the audience like to speak on this telecommunications? All right. I would just like to say that it takes an incredible person to have a job like that. I formed them when they've been doing their job and I shared them doing it. And they deserve a lot of credit for what they do. Know that what they do is provide the police the information that they need, you know, I mean, real-time data so that they're safe and people as they're going to see as safe. And I think they do a great job, so.
Very important job and they're hiring, so.
And that's another thing. They are doing, they are, my staff have what they're supposed to be staffed, I believe, last I heard. I don't know if that's still true. Do you know?
They're low. I'm not sure if it's out of that cap, but they're considered.
All right. So moving on, a moral and business item is a resolution for a pump replacement on our Well Four public works director, Jay Harris. That's the information for us.
Jay Harris, our public works director. So in January, I came to you with somewhat of an emergency that Well Four pump had failed, pump and motor. And you approved the replacement in January of it. And American Pump and Drilling came out, put in the new pump motor, and completed the work, I don't know, about six weeks ago now. And originally, the quote was for about $70,000. They didn't need all the parts. And so, we actually came in under budget of about $67,000. And with completion of the project, we're just asking council to approve the closeout of the Well Four pump replacement project.
Thank you, Director Harris. Don, anyone still have a public comment?
I don't think so, but we're just going to check here. No, there isn't, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Do we have a motion?
I move to place resolution number 1326-0324 on the council's action agenda for the April 16th, 2024 meeting.
All right. Do we have any comments or questions? We have a motion in second to replace, to place resolution number 1326-0324 on the council action agenda for April 16th meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. On their action agenda, now Jay has some action items for us. First is an ordinance related to frontage improvements, charges, and transportation impact fees.
Yeah. Good evening, council. So, frontage improvement charges, we have an ordinance that actually has two municipal code sections in it. The city attorney likes to combine changes that are somewhat related. So the first one, frontage improvement charges were adopted by the commission at that time in 2015. The original intent was infill lots. Those were lots that were basically paper-plated lots. There was no street or improvements or minimal street improvements. That, those were lots created before 1938, that they pay a frontage improvement charge, the city would collect it, and then use other funds and maybe build out the street. So, they adopted the ordinance and then in 2017, they set the collection at $0. So there was no money being collected for frontage improvements on these lots that were created prior to 1938. So, I went through, oh gosh, probably a year and a half of different meetings with the Development Code Steering Committee. And part of the Design and Construction Standards Manual was that 150-foot thing that we redefined infill lots. And anyways, instead of 1938, if your frontage is undeveloped, you know, less than 150 feet, it sort of decides on, there's that whole matrix table, I don't know if you guys remember that, that says, hey, is it paved out there? Is there an existing sidewalk stepping to you? That sort of thing. And there's sort of like a yes/no chart to really give the development, community rules on what they need to build. If they didn't build a particular improvement, they would pay the frontage improvement charge for a sidewalk or a little bit of paving or that sort of thing. So, these code changes align with the new standards manual adopted last fall. And let's see into my staff report. And there's been no change, oh, I'm sorry, on the frontage improvement charge. Transportation impact fees, the other half of it, or the larger part of it, actually. So, it was adopted by the commission in 2008. What the transportation impact fees do is give a funding source for capacity improvements. So, we go and do a transportation comprehensive plan. In the comprehensive plan, we find out where the future signals or roundabouts need to be, lane widening, capacity type of improvements in the actual street system. They come up with the cost of all that, they divide it by the units that have not been built yet. And each unit, when you come in, you pay an impact fee for the capacity in the system that particular house or development, it could be a commercial development, is going to use. So, it hadn't been really updated in a significant amount of time. There's a bunch of code changes at the state of Washington that need to be updated with the city attorney. And so Kathleen went through and made some changes. And then staff took the transportation impact fees and actually developed a policy statement of if a developer, we didn't have this before, but if a particular developer went and built a capacity improvement, like a signal, for example, that was on the capacity list, we would give him credits back to his transportation fee credits. So he wouldn't pay them as he was picking up building permits with his particular units. So anyways, with the internal policy and the code changes and the standards manual, they all sort of align. And then the actual master fee schedule is where the charges for transportation impact fees are shown. So that's, there's a huge list. And then every year, when the master fee schedule's updated, just for inflation, the code has that in it. So we keep up with inflation with these charges. Council gets to see that table. So, that's it. There's a track changes version in the council packet. And that is the end of the staff report for both of those code changes.
Don, anyone else have a public comment?
No, there isn't, Mr. Mayor.
All right. They're reading ordinance number 2020-0224.
Ordinance number 2020-0224. An ordinance of the city of Shelton, Washington amending chapter 12.36 and repealing and replacing chapter 17.12 of the Shelton Municipal Code related to transportation-related development charges.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 2020-0224 as written.
All right. Comments, questions? I think you kind of said it, but you're halfway through. Nothing's changed since.
Nothing has changed, correct.
All right. Comments or questions? All right. We have a motion in second to adopt ordinance number 2020-0224 as written. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next is resolution for sole source purchase from West Tech Products.
So, council, I'm jumping over to wastewater now. So, at our membrane treatment plant and at our main wastewater treatment plant, we have screens that screen the sewer as it comes into the plant. And the screens are of various sizes. That way, the grit and the material is taken out of the fluid that comes into the plant. And it helps in the whole process going through. A lot of sand and grit really damages pumps and it's really hard on our piping systems and that sort of thing. We need to replace the screens and a few parts. Now, as you said, operations and maintenance thing. And so, this particular sole source is for West Tech Engineering Fine Screens. Goble Sampson is the only vendor in the state that sells those fine screens. And we need to do an exact replacement. It's, we can't mix and match with other vendors. And so, we're just requesting that council deem Goble Sampson as the sole distributor and service provider for the all parts, components, and equipment for West Tech Engineering.
Thank you. Don, anyone else have a public comment?
No, there isn't, Mr. Mayor.
They're reading a resolution number 1325-0324.
Resolution number 1325-0324. A resolution of the city of Shelton, Washington declaring the purchase of West Tech Engineering brand equipment, parts, components, and service to be clearly and legitimately limited to a sole source distributed by Goble Sampson and waiving competitive bidding requirements for such purchases.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to bypass the three-touch rule for the sole source purchase and approve resolution number 1325-0324 as written.
All right. Comments, questions? We do this every year, correct? The same one?
Well, there's different sole source, yeah, resolutions that come throughout the year. You may see those, particularly in wastewater treatment plants that are really specific and really refined, as Director Harris said. It's, I think Councilmember Sherman said today, we're buying Ford parts to put on a Ford vehicle rather than Chevy parts to put on a Ford vehicle. And that's a good analogy that Councilmember Sherman came up today is it needs to be like for like in these systems because they are really refined and specific.
All right. Have we, probably not, have we started switching over to ceramic, ceramic filters? Because we were going to do that a few years ago.
Not yet. A few years ago, when we replaced the membrane filters up at the plant, we put back in what we originally bought. We got about 10 years out of them. They were starting to rip and fail on us. And so, we did a wholesale replacement. And then we kept the good ones that weren't fully damaged and as replacements as we go on. We expect, so we've about two years into the new filters there. In the wastewater comprehensive plan, there's an upgrade in there. I think it's about a three and a half million dollar project to go to the ceramic filter systems, probably in the next two, three years when we need. Right now, we're not at capacity at the plant, but when we start getting closer and closer, we're going to go in and put the newer filters in, which should give us about 1.5 times the treatment capacity of what we get right now. Get about 50% more is what they're figuring. The reason why we didn't do it a few years ago is there was a little cutting edge. A lot of people, they were starting to use them, but you know, not enough people had been out there using them yet. And we really wanted to make sure that the ceramic filters are real. They are. And that the vendors are getting better and better. A lot of times, when you buy the first models of something, they find deficiencies in them, and they did. And it's good. So we're probably a few years out from doing that and replacing to these higher capacity ceramic filters in the future.
Great. I was just kind of curious.
Yeah.
I remember, I remember that's why this brought, this West Tech brought that back to me. All right. Any other comments or questions?
Just want to keep the water quality high and the water quantity coming so we can grow. And that water is life and it's our number one thing we need to establish when you have civilization. So, keep the water coming and keep it clean.
Yep. And may, we have to meet the permit requirements from the state, which actually comes down from the federal government.
And which we get awards for year after year.
We're doing a really, really good job. But you got to keep up with the operations and maintenance, and that's what we're talking about tonight, is replacing these older parts, you know, before they fail, right?
Sounds great. All right. We have a motion in second to bypass the three-touch rule for the sole source purchase and approve resolution number 1325-0324 as written. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Jay, you're up again.
Yeah. So, this is another sole source for the Goble Sampson vendor. And it's for Lakeside Equipment Corporation. They have different screen parts that we also need. And so, exact same thing at both plants, that we use the Lakeside product for a piece of the screening system, and we need to replace some of those.
Anyone else have a public comment, Donna?
No, there isn't, Mr. Mayor.
They're reading a resolution number 1327-0324.
Resolution number 1327-0324. A resolution of the city of Shelton, Washington declaring the purchase of Lakeside Fine Screens to be clearly and legitimately limited to a sole source distributed by Goble Sampson and waiving competitive bidding requirements for such purchases.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to bypass the three-touch rule for this sole source purchase and approve resolution number 1327-0324.
All right. Comments or questions? All right. We have a motion in second to bypass the three-touch rule for the sole source purchase and approve resolution number 1327-0324 as written. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next up is a grant, is a resolution to accept a grant fund for library deck park to Rick Jordan Supervisor, Supervisor Jordan Carple says the details. Sorry, Jordan.
Thanks to you, Mayor, and thank you, council. Tonight, I bring back to you from two weeks ago, our grant contract with Department of Commerce and the Library Capital Improvement Program. This grant will help us with funding to repair the surfacing of the deck and the railings, mainly, and any rock or damage that's been by water intrusion. One change, minor change with the contract and the scope of work is that we added the east and the west side side deck railings because they are too, that need to be upgraded. So, other than that, no other changes since the last time I saw you.
Thank you, Jordan. Donna, they're reading a resolution number 1322-0324.
Do you want to know if there's any public comments?
Oh, yes, I do. Any public comment?
No, there are not.
I haven't read resolution.
Okay.
1322-0324. Trying to move this along.
Resolution number 1322-0324. A resolution of the council of the city of Shelton, Washington authorizing the city manager to accept grant funds in the amount of $67,900 for the William G. Reed Library Deck Repairs.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion?
You're welcome.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve resolution number 1322-0324 as presented.
All right. Comments or questions? It'd be great to get that deck used again, which we talked about last meeting. Many years, many decks have been used.
I spoke with Timberland Regional Library's executive director last week, and they're planning a purchase of some deck equipment in preparation of that being opened. So, it's great that that resource will be available to the patrons of William G. Reed Library.
That's great. Thank you. Do you have a comments or questions? All right. We have a motion in second to approve resolution number 1322-0324 as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Aaron, has a question for us about a contract for ADA transitions.
Mayor, council, honored to be here. Thank you for the opportunity. These are several issues that we discussed at our last meeting. I'll review them here briefly. The first one pertains to the ADA transition plan. If you recall, we're, we've been asked by the state and others to, I basically identify ADA problems as far as access with ramps, push buttons, those kinds of things. Basically, put that in a, identify them, and then put them in a plan on how we're going to progress on eliminating those in the future. Really important. As an example, I just did a walkthrough of Olympic Highway North. We have several of the ramps, if not all of them, that don't meet ADA standards. So, we have a lot. The benefit with this is it basically allows you, we observe that there are some issues here, and it gives you a plan on how you're going to attack it in the future. So you got to figure out budgeting and those kinds of things. The only way plausibly, in my opinion, that you can do that otherwise, the other option is to just go out and fix everything. But the reality is, there's no, we can't financially do that. So, the intent here, TransFO, as I mentioned before, is an organization that's on our on-call roster. I've worked with them a lot, especially in the corridor up there at Renton and Auburn area. They're very good, and they will do a good job here. We had budgeted about 60K last year in this year's budget, and they're ready to go. So, unless there's any questions, comments, or thoughts, look for you guys to think that out.
Anyone else have a public comment, Donna?
No, we don't, Mr. Mayor.
They're reading the resolution number 1321-0224.
Resolution number 1321-0224. A resolution of the council of the city of Shelton, Washington authorizing the city manager to approve a public works on-call consultant roster work order for providing the city with the state mandated ADA transition plan.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion?
Move to adopt resolution number 1321-0224 as presented.
All right. Comments or questions?
Mr. Mayor, who was the second?
Second.
Sure. Thank you.
It's a little bit rough around the Olympic Highway. So, to see this going through is really hard. The downtown walk has been really great, but Olympic Highway needs some help, so thank you.
This more identifying stuff for the transportation plans down the road, kind of what we're doing? We're not going to.
This will be help integrate in any street projects or any other development projects that are, that come down the pike, but they could be ADA-specific projects as well as they're identified in the document that comes out of this plan exercise, yeah.
The most critical thing is it opens it up for much more grant funding, too.
Absolutely.
That's why we're doing this. We need money to make that happen.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? All right. We have a motion in second to adopt resolution number 1321-0224 as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Aaron, you're up.
Yes, sir. Mayor, thank you. Again, this was also an issue that we discussed. If you've noticed, our Safe Routes to Schools project is underway. They basically, they're working in all three spots, 7th, 9th, and.
Yeah, and up at the high school.
And also up at the high school, but you'll notice that there's construction stuff up there. So, they're moving forward. If you recall, you guys, this was one of the ones that we're kind of in-house trying to do most of the construction management with this, and we are. There is a small piece with regard to mandated PE oversight of a project, meaning having a certified engineer that can actually review submittals and those kinds of things. That's what this contract is. It's for $24,000, also with the understanding that it's all grant funded, you guys. This is not our monies. So. So the intent here is, and this gentleman is already doing it because we're underway, but we want to pay them for that oversight, and that's what this is. It's a resolution, again, funded by grants in order to provide that oversight for us.
Thank you, Aaron. Donna, may I read the resolution number 1323-0324?
What about a public comment?
Yes, public comment. I guess I want out of here tonight. Yes, anyone have a public comment?
We don't, Mr. Mayor.
Now may I have a reading of the resolution number 1323-0324?
Resolution number 1323-0324. A resolution of the Council of the City of Shelton, Washington, authorizing the city manager to approve Amendment Number Two to the Safe Routes to School Crossing Improvement Project as outlined within the grant agreement with WASDOT Local Programs.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt resolution number 1323-0324 as presented.
Comments or questions? Do you have a motion to second to adopt resolution number 1323-0324 presented? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. Aaron is up again.
Thank you, guys. Trying to keep it brief. Again, this is a really important project for us in our, the way that we can develop in the future. If you recall, we got what we identify as the angle side pressurization project. We got 1.8 million dollars from Department of Commerce. In essence, what the project's going to do is it's going to replace some pumps. It's also going to put in some more new, upper-sized water line. The big thing, you guys, is the SCADA integration and the computer programming component of it. That's a lot of where this money is going to. But again, the intent here is this is going to help us deal with the development woes of inadequate water, those kinds of things. So really important project. If you recall, I worked with the granting agency, and they said, get to work. We're already at work. What we're doing here is we're basically just approving the grant agreement. And as soon as it, and if it's approved tonight, Mark will sign the contract with them tomorrow, and we're off and running. So if you have any questions, please ask. It's an important project, and it's going to do some really good benefit for us and the water system for sure.
Thank you, Aaron. Donna, anyone have a public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
You have a reading of resolution number 1324-0324.
Resolution number 1324-0324. A resolution of the Council of the City of Shelton, Washington, authorizing the city manager to approve the Angle Side Water System Improvements Grant Agreement with the Washington State Department of Commerce.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt resolution number 1324-0324 as written.
All right, comments or questions? This is a pretty big deal. This is something that's going to keep us building homes. So without it, probably, we wouldn't be building these homes, correct? That's a pretty big deal.
To sum it up, yes.
Nice to get that grant from her. This was from our 35th delegation.
This is direct appropriation from our 35th delegation, yes.
So thank them, Dan Griffey from the human, and Travis Kuntcher for helping us with this. It's a big deal, so. All right, any other comments or questions? All right, we have a motion to second to adopt resolution number 1324-0324 is written. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Council. All right, Mark, do you have a city manager report for us tonight?
Just a couple of things for you tonight, Mr. Mayor and Council. Speaking of our 35th delegation, there's a legislative wrap-up scheduled for Friday morning. I'll be tending, so I'm, I think Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Goodyear is here in Civic Center first thing in the morning, hear about the now past session from our delegation and what they look forward to here in the future. So looking forward to that. The other item I have for you tonight, I've been informed by Councilmember Schmidt is intent to resign from the council effective April 10th. So we will have additional information for the council, most likely next week at the study session on the ninth. Our protocol manual outlines the procedures for filling vacancies on the council outside of the election. So we'll have some more information for you on the ninth. It's obviously, it's an appointment by by the council. So follow, follow those procedures in there and bring that to you for further discussion on the ninth. That's all I have for you tonight.
All right, anybody have anything for, excuse me? All right, this time members of the public are invited to make public comment on any city-related topic that's not listed on the agenda. Donna, anyone have a public comment?
Yes, we do, Mr. Mayor. Our first speaker is Kathy McDowell. Good evening, Mayor Onisco and Council. I'm Kathy McDowell, and I live within the city limits. I'm kind of piggybacking what Aaron talked about tonight, the ADA. Concerned about the sidewalks and the cracks. I think I've been talking about it for a long time. When you aren't too sturdy on your feet, and you're looking out further where you're going, your foot can catch on these cracks in these sidewalks, and there's a lot of cracks in these sidewalks. And down you go, and not so much, the sidewalks being fixed is a big thing, but someone being hurt is the biggest, and what the ramifications for the city would be if that happened. So I'm just encouraging all of you to think about maybe pushing that forward a little faster and getting some of the sidewalks fixed. There's one right here on the corner by the bank that I've gone over, almost gone down a couple of times, and I don't want to do that. So encouragement to all of you to work on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, it looks like maybe someone named Dean. Okay, how about Dean Jewett?
Dean Jewett, lifelong Mason County member, thank you. My lovely wife's not here to read our State of the Union address, so I'll do it for you. I, there was a observed man pissing on the building down by Holly Kahoon, Second He, Second Street Hair Design. We had a passed out gentleman at Building 10 that we had to have the fire truck and aid car before he even woke up. There's also, that building number 10 has also been tagged with graffiti. Who's going to pay for that? Tax dollars do, of course. We have, and that same thing, we had dog feces in the parking lot. We've already heard about that numerous times. We had a, a lady had to be trespassed. She tried to enter our building down at a railroad. We had three car campers, that community lifeline, which don't seem to have any, they don't have to pay anything, whatever else. We don't use our anti-camping ordinance, which I don't quite understand why. We had a gentleman that went walking down to a poker tournament. He passed three alleys, and there was individuals digging in the garbage in every single one of the alleys, throwing stuff around. Let's see, we had a, we had three panhandlers. One of them was taken up 10 feet, including the handicap ramps, which hits me onto the ADA. There's also a case in Portland where the city of Portland's getting ready to get sued for ADA violations. There's a code in your ordinance that talks about impeding the flow of pedestrian traffic. You make that traffic step into the street, you got a recipe for disaster. We also had, there's, you know, there's multiple social media. You guys all know I'm big on social media. So, you know, there was a posting on there that said, like, what, 350 comments had nothing to do with me. There's another one with 125, nothing to do with me. People are getting upset. They're not down here speaking, but they're getting upset. I would hope that you guys would take that into consideration and see what you can do about that. And I know the three things that you can do is my hot-button topics. No lay lie ordinance, enforce your street camping, and I forget the third one. So I want to save some time because I, I had to call for an unruly lady that we had to have a DCR out. And I cannot say enough about Chief Costad and his force, and how they handled it, and how reactive, and how engaging that they are, as well as our city, or our Citizens Police Academy. Great job on that, whoever was involved with that. It was enlightening, those individuals that were able to come in and actually give us their time. Highly appreciated. Teresa Johnson Trail. At one time, we were sending Public Works individuals up there to take a look at it. Apparently, we're not anymore. All right, thank you.
And, Mr. Mayor, we have one person up to you, that's Colleen Carmichael.
Good evening, Mayor Onisco, fellow councilmembers. My name is Colleen Carmichael. I'm the Executive Director of Quixote Communities. My source this evening is the Washington State Standard, which was published December 2023. According to HUD, more than 653,000 Americans are experiencing homelessness, a 12% increase from last year. Activers are trying to find ways to alleviate the uncomfortable visuals of countless rows of their constituents sheltered in tents. In the regard of the sweep, going to courts to expand our power decline camps and adopting city-designated camps. As civil rights states try to expand our sweep policies, local American Civil Liberties Union chapters have filed lawsuits settling to city miners elsewhere. Data supports that sweeps are expensive and ineffective. There is a fact that more cities' encampment sweeps landed on a level of 2,308 people from March to November of 2022. An audit report provided by the comptroller Brad Landers stated, "The evidence is clear, by ever measure, the homeless sweeps failed." Several academic papers have found that homeless encampment sweeps can lead to adverse mental and physical health effects for displaced people. In addition, sweeps are expensive. A 2022 report examined sweeps from nine RSC cities, including Tacoma, Washington. The reporter found that the sweeps are costing cities annually from $1,600 up to $6,000 per individual per year. Safe sleep zones being offered by some cities on publicly owned land. The sites have become a beacon for people who don't like shelters, want privacy, and have access to assistance. Residents receive breakfast and dinner, have access to shelters, laundry facilities, and power outlets. Those also show that it can help take people to public transportation hubs. The sites have become an assistance for medical help, general case management, mental health, and harm reduction assistance. What effect remains clear. The number of homes will continually grow if the city is payable or unwilling to offer any housing-based solutions and continues to pay for sweeps.
Thank you.
That's all the questions, Mr. Mayor.
All right, do you have any new items for discussion?
I'll just add to what Mr. Jewett had to say about the police department. I was in a situation here a week before last with a 14-year-old that I had to call medics for over at Nealon Park that I happened to come across. And they were fantastic, and our new, was it Houston? Yep, he was there. He was absolutely wonderful. I think he's going to be good. And I just want to say that, yeah, props to you guys for handling that how you did.
Again, thank you. You've got a great department, and you guys have done a great job, so. Any other items for discussion? I have a small item. So everybody's aware, our dog pound is kind of overflowing with dogs, and there's people wanting to bring dogs. And our adoption fee is quite large at the moment. So I would propose that we lower our adoption fee, maybe for the month of April, maybe to $100 for the senior dogs, for a couple of reasons. One, the dogs need a good home to go to. And I think that we should also have a little regulation that, that with that fee, they must have a fence yard. I don't want to give a dog, somebody does, the dog's going to get loose and run around with it. So with fence yard, I think we should lower the adoption fee just to see if it works, plays out. So I just want to know what you guys thought.
How do you check and see who has a fence?
Well, it'll be on our sheet, not on a newspaper. It'll be on our.
Maybe we did something a bit of a preemptive. Because, you know, it don't take but 10 minutes to go to somebody's house, you know, take a look and see if it's going to be a good fit. I mean, if you go there and there's holes in the fence, there's nine dogs that are around the yard, you know, a mess everywhere. It's probably not going to be an ideal situation for that, but.
It depends where, depends where it is. I mean, they could be out of county.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, potentially. I mean, we're, I think we're at 10 or 11 dogs in the, in the animal shelter right now. We've got a waiting list for surrenders at this point.
And we can't pick up any dogs.
Yeah, the altering the fee schedule would take a resolution by council. So the earliest we could get that to you is, is on the 16th.
Do you want it run for like 30 days?
So I, I think we can bring you a proposal, and we can talk about it a little more at the, on the study session on the ninth, if you wish, and come with some options. Obviously, there's a, there's a graduated fee schedule for puppies are higher, and the older the dog gets, the, the fee goes down.
It's the older dogs that are more difficult to adopt out. So that's what I think, more of the adult dog is what I was thinking, because we seem to be okay with the puppies. They go pretty fast.
Certainly, certainly a concern of staff is the dog coming right back, right? So if somebody's not able or willing to take care of the animal, and they're doing it because it's, it's low cost or free, and it just adds to our enforcement activity or, or maintenance of that animal, to continue, that, that certainly is a concern. But I understand the intent. It's something that happens at many animal shelters and, and adopting, adoption facilities throughout, I'm sure throughout the country, but throughout the state, certainly. So we can look at some options and bring it forth for further consideration.
I would like to go to study session and then think about maybe having, like, maybe starting a fund so people can defer the costs or use that fund for helping out with the, with the transfer fee for the, for the individual dog.
We have the ability to accept donations from, from the public for specific services the city may provide. What is most common is, is park services, whether it's a play structure, a bench, or something like that. And so individuals from the public, groups from the public, can make a donation and specify how it should be used. In this case, it could be used to offset adoption fees, if that's the case. We'd have to set up a policy, how that's applied, if it's a percentage. Like, I'll keep relating to our scholarship program, Recreation. So we have a donation, we have a donation program for scholarships, for rec, youth recreation programs, and it'll pay for 50% of the scholarship fee on a first come, first served basis. So we have to develop a policy, so it's not an arbitrary decision by staff. They have a policy to follow.
After COVID, there is, there are a lot of dogs that are now being returned. So it's really important that we look at this issue and think about how we can help stop the increase in the homeless dog population.
You know, every single day, you get another call about a cat, dog, dump, and, you know, need this and that for it. It's definitely a problem here that we see all the time.
Yeah.
The post that he was talking about, spoke about a dog that was up there, gotten hit by a car. That's a big concern that we have, you know, for now.
Yeah, absolutely right.
And, you know, the, the ability for people to pay for the vet care after that is, you know, something we need to look at before we decide to give anybody a half a dollar.
Well, you know, I figured that the fencing was probably a great start, maybe staff thought was a better idea, a better idea. But I do believe these dogs deserve a good home, and I do believe our adoption fees are kind of high for that. And I just think that, you know, we lowered, I was actually here in the city one day when there was a gentleman that wanted this little small dog, and, and he couldn't afford it. And he was like in tears, I mean, he really wanted his dog. I mean, I offered to pay for it, and I think somehow he ended up getting the dog somehow, I think.
Yeah.
I don't remember how he got it, but, so, but I'd like to start out the, the fund. I brought a check, personal check for $1,000 for the city, and I did put on here for adoption help for, for the animals, adoption fee donation. So if you bring $100, that's 10 dogs that can get adopted for free if, but if we, whatever, bring 18 for the month. So I'll get to start my end director, and we'll meet this over and.
We'll get you the proper paperwork for that donation.
But I, I do think the dogs deserve a good home, and I, and I think our fees are kind of high, and I understand why they're high. We've talked about the dog fees in the past. It's because it costs a lot of money to take care of a dog. I mean, we're paying that bills and getting fixed and, you know, and sometimes we're sick when we get them. And I, I get it, but having 10, 11 dogs in our pound constantly is, is not a big help either for the dogs or for us, so.
Correct, and the, and the longer they're in there, you know, there's social issues that increase and things like that. So it's better to get them into a home that can care for these animals as soon as possible.
All right, I look forward to talking about that, and council have any new items for discussion? All right, our next meeting is scheduled Tuesday, April 16th, 2024, at 6:00 PM. We also have a study session April 9th, 6:00 PM. This meeting is adjourned at 6:49 PM.